Call a meeting to order. This is a special meeting. Today is Friday, the 30th. Three o'clock in the afternoon. Roll call.
Mayor Chris Hennig?
Here.
Mayor Pro Sam Quinney?
Here.
Councilman Arnold?
Here.
Councilwoman Blair is absent excuse. Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Mazel?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox is absent excuse if you have a question.
With Blair on the phone, it'll be in Spanish.
Maybe you can go to that line. She puts her arms.
Noel, thanks for being here. Karen, thanks for being here. Craig, who's running the show?
Allison.
Allison.
Well, you're running the show.
Yeah. You're on.
Well, what I passed out to everybody just has a little bit more information about the five topics that are high on our minds here at the city of Prescott this year. The first being issues regarding community residences. Thank you so much Representative Campbell for your bill regarding extension of statewide juror requirements. The second one, the funding crisis in state retirement systems. Obviously, that's something that's been discussed multiple times about the years. Those increasing this year, our general fund revenue and state share revenue. And obviously, all of those things are what help the city run and provide services for the residents and visitors. And then we were hoping to get some update from you for whatever you're interested in, but specifically on the upcoming and current state budget and then the status of transaction of the tax. More information, which thank you so much for including us during the time. So actually, you've communicated with us on how we get any clues to those issues. Really an opportunity for the council and our local representatives to get together and talk. Can I take you through this or do you think we start talking over the major topics or does he want to provide some of these for us? So from there, I'll be there.
Last Wednesday, about four o'clock into, I dropped the bill that we'll be discussing. It's a Bush partisan bill. I was able to gather quite a bit of Democratic support for the bill, including the minority leader, and which I, it's somewhat a little difficult to do down there, but this is, I'm working this thing as hard as I can, and I wanted to get as much support for it as I could. And by gathering as much support as I can, I get shot that this will go to the committee on health, and they will go through committee hearings. And from there, we will see where it goes. Hopefully, it will come out today and get passed and then be voted on by the House and then over to the Senate. So the first step has been completed. There can be amendments made to the bill. I'm sure that I've received a lot of input for that. I'm really kind of glad that we got to that point where I was able to do that. It's a top priority with me, and it's something that I believe in deeply and I want to accomplish while I'm down there.
Okay, let's see. My place breaks fall this year. I am serving on four committees. I am chair of the interns committee. I am also serving on transportation, that's Noel, and also the county and municipal government committee, as well as add water and land. So I have four heavy committees. I had 28 bills until a couple days ago. Now I have 29 bills. The 29th bill that was just added is I'll Be Carrying the House Bill for the TPT fixes, which I'm thrilled about. Senator Lesko is doing it in the Senate. I will handle the mirror bill in the House. Works great because that way I can kind of keep control of it and make sure, try and make sure nobody tries to throw anything on it that won't work for us. But we're getting there. With the TPT right now, Allison is wonderful. She and I communicate quite often. The key component that will help the cities and towns is we are pulling out, the bill's getting dropped Monday, so as it is right now, this minute, we are pulling out all of what we call horizontal construction. So anything that has to do with underground roadwork, paving work, anything else will stay under the prime contracting tax, which, and that is a big chunk of money when you consider federal dollars and state dollars that are put in there along with municipal dollars. So that is a big chunk. As far as vertical construction, new, any new vertical construction is still under construction sales tax, and we're just finishing up that fine line and refining that. As to what is major remodeling, repair, maintenance, as opposed to major remodeling additions, things like that. So I think it's still, it's still going to be a little confusing, I'm sorry to say. Would I rather have it refilled? Yes, but that isn't going to happen. So this is the best we can do. A couple of the other heavy lift bills, no pun intended, one of them is the Uber Lyft ride sharing program. Don't have a lot of it here in Prescott now, but I think you're going to see this coming up more and more. And that is the, it's the argument that's been going on between taxi cab companies, limousine companies who are full war regulated by Department of Ways and Measures, by the way, our Andy Tobin is now the director there, versus the Uber Lyft, which is that you hit an app and they come pick you up sort of thing, which virtually has no regulation. So we're trying to come up with good compromises there. So it's a biggie. I am doing my note texting to G again. Hasn't been assigned to a committee yet, so I'm wondering what's going on there. I have a few workman's comp bills, but one of those workman's comp bills is, has to do with marijuana, and it has to do with state compensation. So as you know, there is a huge proliferation of young people from ages 20 to 30 who have the bulk of the medical marijuana cards right now. And what my bill will do is say workman's compensation is not going to pay for it. So hopefully, we'll get that through. If you have that many people now all of a sudden that are on marijuana, it has a huge effect on the taxpayers and the business owners as if we have to continue to pay for that in the future. And then the other big lifting is I also have two PSPRS reform bills. Not sure how far we're going to get through them in this session. We're having some stakeholder meetings starting next week. Many of you may know this has to go to the voters, so this is not something we want to shove through. We want to make sure that before we get it on the ballot, that it's something that we believe that everybody can get behind for the most part. So we're trying to vet out what the issues might be to try to get it somewhere where we believe that it has a good chance of passing.
That would hit when, Karen, that bill, that go to the voters next cycle?
It would be on the 16th ballot, yes.
I didn't get a chance to tell you the committees I'm on, and I think they're really good committees. I do sit, Karen, on the transportation committee, and that's going to be a huge issue this year. We hope, I hope, that we can do something to get more money back to the counties. We're talking about that actively right now. The stakeholders, the county associations, we've been meeting with them, and we hope to come up with some good solid proposals so that we can try to get more funding back into the county system for our roads and maintenance. I also sit on the Public Safety and Military Affairs Committee, and that's a very interesting committee, in and of doing law enforcement, military veterans, et cetera. We'll come through that committee, and it's a very interesting committee to sit on and listen to the issues that come up. And lastly, I am vice chairman of the committee. It's called Federalism in State's Rights. It's a kind of a sleepy little committee, but this year's not going to be so sleepy because we're going to have the Article Five Convention of the States issue come up and come through, and that is going to be a real barn murderer. And as you know, there is a way to amend the Constitution, and the states have that within their powers to do it. And so if you write up the stuff on Article Five, just check your book on the Constitution, and that shows you the procedures. It's a state-only deal. Congress has nothing to do it. The Congress will call the convention, and the states will run it, and if the requirements are met and the majority of the states approve of it, there could be a specific amendment to our Constitution. And basically, they're talking about balanced budget, term limits for federal officers, term limits for judicial officers, et cetera. So I'm looking forward to that too also. And I do have four other bills. They're minor, they're Pali issues dealing with fire removal, fire materials, et cetera. They're being worked as I speak right now, and they're good for the counties, and there are four of them, and they're not big bills, but they do affect some of the things we do in the handling of firefighting. That's it.
Anybody? Go for it. Go for it, Senator.
One, Karen.
Yes, sir.
You brought up something to do with Medicare, workman's comp, something to do with marijuana. All right? I'm not the one that recognized marijuana as an medicinal purpose drug. All right? Am I the one that recognized oxycontin or hydromorphone or vicodin or some of the other opiates, et cetera? While you would acknowledge I want to keep marijuana from prescription or from Medicare prescription, whatever the case would be, sorry, not Medicare was the other one, workman's comp, does that also apply to some of the other narcotics?
No. My bill particularly addresses the medical marijuana. It is, this is something that's going, excuse me, through the other states right now, just as an FYI, access does not pay for medical marijuana, and the reason being is because it is still considered an illegal drug under federal laws. So we're starting to see that the door is starting to be creaked open with people expecting us to pay, particularly these young people that...
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but if I'm not mistaken, opium, cocaine, morphine, all those are considered illegal too. And yet, there's subsidiaries of all those drugs that are used in illegal prescriptions. Answer my question.
If they are recognized, I'm not a doctor, but it's my understanding that if they are recognized by the FDA and by the medical profession, then some of those drugs, I don't know what all of them are, but some of those that may be, like oxycontin, I believe that that is obviously a prescription drug that is covered and recognized. So those would be, this is strictly dealing with marijuana.
Did you say workman's comp? Is it paying for it now?
No.
No, but the door is opening. We're starting to see claims starting to come through, and we're trying to nip it in the bud before it gets out of control.
I need to do about that.
Well, I guess, one of the questions I have with this is along with marijuana or any other drug, one of the biggest issues we have right now is over prescriptions with drug frauds.
That is correct.
All right? There's a lot of drug fraud, whether it's through your VAs, whether it's through your medical industries, whatever, where they're over prescribing, and all this stuff is going on the streets because there's a lot of money, a lot of money. While it may be prescribed for one guy, he may not be the ultimate consumer. Hence, that's contributing to a lot of the problems we're having here in Prescott with drug rehabilitation. I mean, it's all sort of in concert as far as somebody like me is concerned, and the biggest drug dealer in our town happens to be the VA center, all right? And all these drugs that they're over prescribing are ending up on the streets because they're cheap through the prescription.
And to that point, Councilman Lamerson, if you remember, a year ago, one of my workman's comp reform bills, which was a huge one, I didn't know until after I was able to get it passed, that they had been trying to do it for 10 years. Yeah, they told me that after the fact. That was the evidence-based medicine. So basically, what that does is, we talked before, Arizona has a 20% fraud factor in our state compensation. The national average is about 9%. And so the bill that I did a little over a year ago is what we call evidence-based medicine. It means that there are different and more narrowly scoped practices of when and how and what we do. One of the things that we find with a lot of our abuse is exactly what you said, Councilman, is that prescription drugs, heavy prescription drugs, are being administered to, are prescribed to these people. They take them, and instead of them taking them for a short period of time when they are in a lot of pain, what happens is, is they are being over prescribed months upon months. And then consequently, what happens after six months, they're hooked on these. So now, we have a double problem because not only are they not getting better and getting back to work and getting off of workman's compensation, now they have no desire to go back to work because they're hooked on drugs. And now we have to deal with that whole proliferation of that issue.
Well, as you're fully aware of, I take prescription drugs for a couple of different reasons. And some of them are vicodin, and they're controlled substances, that's what it is. What I don't understand is if, through the pharmaceutical industry, I'm regulated, for example, with my drug, I can't have more than X amount of it in my possession at a given time before it's re-prescribed, period, that's the way it works, and I'm monitored. You guys have got to have the ability to monitor who's issuing what drug and how much, and there's got to be a red flag opportunity to know which people out there in the medical industry about every 20 minutes is issuing 3,000 oxycontin pills, people. You guys have got to have that information there, today's technology. When they can tell me on a given day when my wife goes to get my prescription, you can't have it today because you've got three days left. Okay, you've got to wait till tomorrow. They can do that to me, then why can't you guys monitor what doctors prescribing what into what tube? I mean, if you really want to get a grip on some of this stuff, there's a way to get a grip on it. If we really mean that we want to have a war on drugs, there's a way to go about this, and it's not by turning your head. You know, it's like, if we know the VAs are prescribing X amount of drugs, who are they prescribing it to, you need to know that, and who's doing the prescriptions, you need to know that. If you've got one guy that's giving a lot of dope out, you need to know that, and it needs to be red flagged.
Councilman, thank you for bringing that up. That is part of the bill that we did last year. The pharmacies started it, and we're working with all the doctors right now, getting them on board. Everything is tied into computers now, both through the doctor's office and through the pharmacies. What happens is, is when there is a prescription that is filled out, it is in the database, and the doctors, first of all, will be able to look in that database to see if that patient has already been prescribed. We are finding what's happening is, is you've got Suzie Q. going to Dr. A. and saying, I need these prescription drugs for whatever reason they need, or Dr. A. will give it to her, and two days later, she goes down the street to Dr. B., and Dr. B. had to be known to Dr. A., vice versa, they didn't know. So part of this evidence-based medicine that we are working on, Industrial Commission is working on all the guidelines, have been working on it for a whole year now. Part of that is that the doctors will go into the database, and they can tell Suzie Q., I'm sorry, you just got a prescription from Dr. A. three days ago, I'm not giving it to you. The pharmacists are doing the same thing. We are getting them tied into computers so that what happens is, if they go and they try to get a prescription filled, it will come up automatically and say, wait a minute, you just have this prescription filled three days ago, and by the way, where'd you get this other prescription out?
Didn't this rule out Sheila Brooks' program?
Yes.
She kind of started, and saw a lot of success with it.
Sheila's been doing wonderful work with Metfor, and it's stuff that I worked on or with five years ago over in the Verde.
I think one of the problems with the medical marijuana is I think it gets shared a lot. I mean, I know that it does get shared because we had a gentleman that was running a big loader and close proximity to other workers on the ground, something very scary, you've got to be right there with it. Pulled a random test, showed up dirty for marijuana, said, well, my wife has a car, that's where I can get my marijuana. So I mean, it does move across there. But the problem with it is, I think with marijuana, there's no real way to easily and quickly measure a level of impairment, and we haven't gotten that. You know, it stays in your body for so long. With alcohol, you can buy $100 breathalyzer, you can see right where someone's at, but you know, marijuana stays in you for 28 days or so, I guess, and as an employer, it scares me because if there was an accident there, he tests dirty, the consequences wouldn't fall to him if he killed somebody on the job site, it would fall to me as the employer. Same with the guys driving the trucks, you know, and how do you measure that level? The guy could have been, maybe he smoked it 14 days ago, drives down the road, gets in an accident, well, now it's easily condemnable because there's a dirtiness in his system. And just because they hold medical marijuana, we can't deny them the right to get the commercial driver's license, and we can't stop them from going to work. So it's going to take a whole lot of training to get a hold on this. It's so new that we're testing the waters, and I hope they come up with a way to do that. Thanks for all your work on the, we talked a little bit about the texting down at the transportation meeting in Phoenix, and you know, I don't know if you had any luck or had sign of merit in the technical fix of that, if you know people on the national level that can instruct that. These new phones know, they have the GPS, they know if it's moving or not. You know, with a program, I think it would be a very simple fix to say, if this phone is moving more than 10 miles an hour, the texting shuts off. Because anymore, when you're driving down the road and you see the people swerving, it's not because they're drunk, they have that phone right up to their face, and to some people, it's just addicting. They cannot look at it when they feel that thing buzz or ring, so...
So what about buses? Right on buses or RVs or...
And there's going to be, there's going to be that. Daniel Matson brought up a good point in our meeting, what about the other three people in the car? I just think this problem is getting so abundant that we need to do a step like that. If you want your text, pull over, get your text. You know, have them come down, you can upload, download, whatever. But personal experience, my wife was driving down the connector road, right through the escurb by the fairgrounds. She's moving, comes up on a backhoe, moving slowly, so she reduces her speed. Girl comes around that curve at 45 miles an hour, and rear ends are moving in traffic, not even stopped that light. And you know, the phone flies out of her hand, gets broken. You know, it's the second car that she's wrecked this time. Some people cannot put that phone down, and I think this is happening quite a bit. We had a guy in Phoenix hit one of my trucks, broadside, full speed, no skid marks. So what was it doing? I mean, could have been sleeping, could have been tuning the radio, could have been texting. But I think this texting is getting out of control, and I bet almost anybody in this room has witnessed that. They see the car swerving. We just had a girl killed on a bike. You know, how often do you see those cars swerve into that bike lane all the time?
Was he texting?
Huh?
Was he texting?
The girl on the bike?
Oh, the doctor, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm just saying that you see, like going down Wild Creek Road, I see it a lot. You have that real small bike lane, people are coming in there all the time. So I think it's a problem that we could look at, it's an easy technical fix. What did you do before texting?
Noel, if I could talk about your bill for just a minute. Thank you very much for taking this on and running it through the process and hearing from a lot of us and a lot of stakeholders in the community. Karen, thanks for your support of making this happen. I noticed that Steve's not on the bill yet as a sponsor. Do you anticipate that he will? I do. And you know, knowing that there are, the city's hands are somewhat tied. We just had a meeting, I think you may have even been given our Phase Two action plan. So you can see what the city's looking at as far as options for dealing with the proliferation in Prescott that's taken place. I've mentioned numerous times, there's some in the industry that want to be part of a positive solution, and some in the industry who want to fight us every turn possible to prevent anything from changing. You know, continuing to use loopholes and finding opportunities to take advantage of the situation. My hope is, as this works through the system, obviously, many of us will probably get to committee meetings to testify about the importance of some of these changes. Are you expecting any additional amendments, or is there anything working that you're aware of that would be coming forward to amend your proposal?
So far, no. Everyone I talked to who signed on, you know, it's not a partisan bill, so there may be ...
Okay. And I know Allison stays on top of what's happening down there on a daily basis, but if you would make sure to alert the mayor and us about any committee meetings or opportunities for us to come down in support of the bill, we'd appreciate that.
I'm using Allison as the main focal point for the city, who, unless directed otherwise, any information I get, I can pass on to her, and she'll disseminate to the city council.
Any posture from the league at all yet?
I did reach out to the different communities that have members that are on health, and so I just did that yesterday, so that we have the bill number and all of that. There are some communities that are interested. Each, it's interesting to talk to them because each community has a little bit of a different issue happening within, in the industry that may or may not be assisted with this specific legislation. And I have been in contact regularly with Colleen Bowers with the Arizona Department of Health Services. He's their legislative person, and I did talk to him again today. So if there, if something does get sort of swirling with the bill, we could be looking at a possible amendment that would address anything from there. So trying to stay on top of it from all angles, but I haven't gotten any resistance from any cities, saying that they had concerns about it.
Allison, are you familiar with the correction bill or the fix on the construction?
Yes, very familiar.
What does it do for us?
Well, it addresses a concern that came up at, you know, Pike County Contractors Association meeting that Representative Campbell's at, where their representative from the Department of Revenue was describing how they were going to apply the legislation that happened two years ago, and I think we both looked at each other and wondered what bill she was talking about. But what it does is it clarifies what will remain as prime contracting so that we don't have a huge reduction in construction-related revenue. Because the interpretation from the Department of Revenue would have made a very significant impact to Prescott and every other city, but more disproportionate for our own.
Karen, on the sale tax simplification bill or whatever went to state, looking at all the money they're spending now and trying to get it up and running, was that anticipated in the original bill?
I don't know, Mayor.
Eight million here, three million over here, so what?
I don't know, Mayor. There was, I will take you back a little bit. This TPT tax bill was a legacy signature bill of Governor Jamperer. Now, I applaud her in the sense that she was trying to make Arizona a little more business-friendly. She was trying to make it a little easier for some contractors, and as we started down this path, I totally understood where she was coming from. However, during the negotiations, when I was speaking with her staff, when we were doing this bill, I tried to explain to them there is a big difference between prime contracting and what I call service contractors. And that's what everybody's starting to call down there now, is service contractors. Service contractors are those that, it's the Sears dishwasher repair and installation man. It is the plumbing company that has 20 trucks and 20 service people, and they go all over Maricopa County every day to replace hot water heaters or fix them. Those are service contractors. They should never have been in prime contracting, quite honestly. I don't know who set it up to begin with. And so all along, what my fight has been is, fine, let's do this for the service contractors, but separate just those two. Leave contracting as contracting regardless of whether it's remodeling or new construction or whatever. We were able to get some of that pulled out. Unfortunately, it was not defined as well as it should be, and quite honestly, the Department of Revenue has sort of decided to make their own interpretation of it, which is what's causing the huge nightmare on this. I also informed the governor's office at the time, asked them if they had any idea, particularly in this downfall, economic downfall, do you have any idea how much money you would be taking away from the state? They gave you this blank look like, what are you talking about? So I went to JLBC, and we requested a fiscal note on it, and it came back showing that the state alone was going to lose over $100 million. That did not even include the cities and the counties. So consequently, that's when they said, okay, yeah, we'll at least pull out the horizontal. Again, what happened is, is that never got transmitted to DOR clearly enough, and they've decided to interpret it the way they want. So we are putting the fixes and making sure DOR understands what the intent of the law is.
Allison, do we still have an estimate of what we're going to lose with the centralized collection?
Yes, and I just passed out a page that kind of takes some of this... Yes, and I just passed out a page that kind of takes some of this and puts it to numbers on a piece of paper. And so what we estimated was in the general fund, that it would be about three hundred thousand in the streets, but this is about three hundred thousand dollars. But that's an estimate, because we don't really know exactly how many will fall within the prime contracting and how many won't. But this new legislation should at least make it very clear who should be paying where and why. And so, so there's some clarity for the contractors and for the city's towns and Department of Revenue.
Okay, away from that, just the regular sale tax collection that the state has taken over all the, is that the number you're talking about?
Yeah, that factors in the prime contracting changes as well as the simplification of the tax collection, and that that may not be as smooth as we would hope, because we have maybe a better understanding of our local taxpayers than someone in Phoenix would have.
Yeah, as, as we talked about the other day, one of the most notable changes is that the state is going to be doing all the licensing. And so we will be out of the loop in understanding whose license, or actually engaged in that activity. So we'll be at arm's length of that, and sure, we'll get reports and things like that. But we've talked about that quite a bit, that farther you get away from it, I mean, it only stands to raise the, you know, the last revenue you're going to.
Can I just ask a clarification on what you all handed out? Fiscal year 2016 impact from the TPT simplification, the current proposal on the governor's budget, the residential rental phase out.
If that bill moves forward.
If that bill moves forward, the multifamily trash collection, if that bill moves forward, the PSPRS police and fire increase, two point three billion, drop in revenue for next fiscal year.
If all of those, that is the total if all of those states move forward. And that does include the, the total actuarial rate increase for the PSPRS, if you have that up. And I don't know, I don't think we would probably take that, but it's just to point out that, you know, we will achieve that total either in year one or over three to five years. And then I'll just point out that that pension number is a result of the field's ruling that reverses some of the good work that the legislature tried to do to adjust the ongoing four percent increases for existing retirees. And the reversal of that has a huge impact on every entity that is involved in PSPRS in the next three years.
So my follow-up question to that, because I've been reading the Republic and Cap Times, you all are down there. Where do you see the governor's budget and the legislature going this term? Because our biggest concern is continuing suite to reductions of shared revenue to municipalities. I mean, you know, two million dollars next year out of, what's our operating budget at the city manager?
About thirty million.
In the general fund? Yeah. It's a pretty sizable hit for us. And some of these look like it could be avoided, but some of these are already in place. It's gonna hit us no matter what.
Charlie, can I just ask, what you're talking about, is it two seven million dollars you're talking about now?
I know it's worth it.
It's the gift that keeps on going. It's just like, right now, in the last three, four, five years, another couple of million dollars in terms of here.
Yep.
So, I mean, this isn't a one-time deal. So, you know, as our general fund, and we're struggling to go up like this, our ability to pay for things keeps coming down like this, because it needs that, the relevant growth.
Yep.
And I'm glad you guys are here, because you need to hear this. I mean, it may not be as big a deal down there in Phoenix, we've got a trillion people with a different tax base than what we have up here. But what we have up here is significantly limited. And if I'm not mistaken, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you guys have given us numbers to the tune of a little, two million dollars a year over the last three years, four years, with the continued, continued and compounded hits, PRS being, am I wrong? And that's huge, out of a budget like we have to use, and it's every year. It doesn't go away. It's every year. So our ability to go forward is significantly limited by some of what's called hunt. You can't blame our cops, you can't blame our firemen. They're not the ones that set up the system. They're the ones that have gotta live by it, just like we do. But there's a significant problem. At some point, it's a non-sustainable system. And if the end game, the cops, the firemen, the very dependents on the system are the ones that are gonna have to pay the biggest price, because it's gonna fall, like it has in other states and other communities. It will fall.
So I know that you all are dealing with the shortfall this year and a billion dollars next year. I don't envy the position the state legislature is in, having to deal with that. But back to the underlying question, what impacts do you see coming to cities and towns like Prescott this year or next year?
First of all, let me say to, to your comments, I don't think there is anyone down there that is more aware of it than I am. As past mayor of Chino Valley for six years, and having been a past mayor and councilperson for Prescott, I know all too well what it's like to try and balance a budget on a municipal level and the strains that it puts on us, with what we've gone through in Chino Valley out there since the economy hit. So you don't have a bigger advocate down there than me. I can tell you that, number one. As far as the budget is an overall, you've been reading the paper, you know we do have these huge shortfalls. You do know that the economy hasn't bounced back as quickly as it's, as we would like. It is starting to pick up. Corporate income tax was higher than what we anticipated this last year. So we do see it's starting to pick up a little bit. The sad thing is, is every time we try and do something and we see light at the end of the tunnel, lo and behold, we get slapped back down again. And in this case, over the last year, we got slapped down by the judges ruling on the K through twelve education funding. So that is what's really putting a huge hole in our budget right now. We not only do not know the exact amount, which is the same position you guys are in, what, how do we do a budget if we don't know what we're, we're having a budget? So on one hand, that has taken a huge chunk, and it's taking a chunk out of everything. Counties, cities, states, police, HIRFIDS, everything is being swept and drained because of the public education funding, in addition to the economy not raising, coming up as quickly as possible. The second thing is, we tried to fix some of the PSPRS problems, and once again, the courts came back against us and said, oh no, it's voter-protected, you can't do anything without the voters coming in and saying that they approve the changes. So all of that that we tried to do before, that was gonna save all the municipalities and the states some money, now instead the courts have said, no, you can't do that either. So here we are with another chunk of change that has to be found somewhere that we hadn't anticipated on, because the courts keep going against us. So it's frustrating, it's very frustrating. We have a new governor, who I, I support him a hundred percent. I'm not gonna say that I will agree with him a hundred percent of the time over the next few years while he's in office, but I think that I, I think he understands economic development, he understands creating jobs, growing the economy, which is insurance, which makes taxes in place for all the things that government does need. He is fiscally conservative and responsible. He is trying very, very hard to balance our budget, because we're not the federal government. We can't just print money, nor should we. So he's trying very, very hard to address everybody's needs as best we can, but still trying to balance the budget, particularly in light of all these unknown factors that we can know, that we know. One of the things I brought up in the small budget meeting that we had yesterday was the amount of money that was being allocated to the Department of Corrections. We do have a growing population. None of us wanna advocate putting criminals, especially dangerous criminals out on the road. But a lot of our money is going to corrections, to keep our state safe. I asked yesterday that perhaps we need to sit down and have a conversation about where do we see the future going with corrections? We better have a game plan. If, in fact, we're gonna stay down the same path, which means we need to still pour in tens of millions of dollars continually, over and over and over again every year, if that's what the voters and the taxpayers wanna do, fine. But we better have a conversation, because maybe we might be, we might wanna have a conversation about, is there a better way to make sure our society is safe and make sure that everything, we are doing the best we can to rehabilitate these people, but can we do it better than sixty-five thou, sixty-five dollars a day to fill prison? We better have that conversation, because I don't wanna see us spending a whole lot of money on building new jails, and then a couple of years down the, down the road, somebody comes up, changes their mind about how we wanna treat our correctional system. So they all agree that, gee, novel concept, I think we're gonna do that. So if that helps at all.
I would like to say that we've been meeting in small groups to discuss the budget and the legislative budget that the House and Senate are going to propose. And we have a baseline that's a lot more than what the governor's, about four hundred and forty dollars difference. Okay, so what we're trying to do is, we're looking at every department and every agency to see where cuts can be made. And when you have, I don't know if you read the newspaper the other day or yesterday, the director of fishing game, they did an audit on him, on his department, and they spent over a million dollars in travel. And, you know, that's, these are the kind of cuts that are, that have to seriously be looked at. One of the areas that, you know, it's very difficult to pull things specifically out of the Department of Public Safety, but looking at the governor's private aircraft and pilots and hangar and maintenance, what, you know, we have to keep essential things, and non-essential things have to go. And my feeling is, the governor can drive around and probably travel like the rest of us, or he can, he can go down, his office can hire a contract aviation outfit to fly him wherever he needs to go. We don't need to spend conservatively, and I'm estimating six, six hundred thousand, maybe seven hundred thousand dollars to maintain that aircraft, the pilots, the maintenance, the hangar, et cetera. So that's what we're looking at. We're trying to bring his budget in line with what our projections are, and they're much more conservative. Now, if the, if we, if we play it conservatively and the economy does better, then we're gonna be ahead of the game. We'll be ahead of the game. And, and I think you addressed this the other day, Karen, if there's any excess funding, if we get more revenues in than we think, and we have a baseline budget, then what to do with the additional funds? Well, there'll be plenty of demand to where they'll go. But this is the time, it's gonna happen now. You just, there's so many structural problems in our budget and spending and the economy that if we don't get a hold of it the next year, this year and the next year, so we're never gonna probably get a hold of it. So that's gonna impact every county, every city, on the funding that you're gonna get. I mean, every, every person I've talked to, every representative from the county association, they're all feeling the pain. And, and, you know, I, I understand it, but you can't squeeze blood out of a turnip, you just can't do it. And it's very difficult to raise taxes. And so I don't really have an answer for you, but that down the hedges, because they're serious down there about getting this thing under control.
Well, because you guys got a fifteen hundred million dollar turnip to squeeze. I mean, that's a lot of money to try and cut, you know? You could take away the governor's airplane or whatever. And you still got fourteen hundred million to go to make it right. And I think we understand that, and I, and I like some of the steps that he's taken with restoring a little bit more HIRF, HIRF funded DPS by charging it on the tags. I think when it comes to transportation, you're both on that, we have serious issues there. I mean, I think it was twenty-five million for greater Arizona for projects. And there's, I think there's a lot of things that we can fix that are small projects to get us by for these times. And, and we've been fortunate here in Pine County to get that on the eighty-nine. I'd love to see us fix sixty-nine a little bit, and then, and then we can get by until times get better. But, you know, as a city, when we're looking at, I'm glad you guys are doing the stuff on the public safety retirement, trying to get a handle on that. I think, last year I was at a conference, and even the mayor guys are starting to realize that this is unsustainable, like he's talking about. And is it, is it fair to keep kicking this can down the road for the new guys coming in? Are they even gonna have anything on the other side? And I've been watching this pie chart, a general fund operating budget, and public safety's now at seventy-one percent of our budget. And we need to have that. We need the police, we need the fire, we need the regional communication, but our turnip is gonna get squeezed, and where do you squeeze it? You know, the library's only seven percent. You know, how much more can you squeeze that? Recreation services, ten percent. How much more can you squeeze that? And I think as, as this gets bigger, you keep your essential services, but I think we're starting to refer to it as the downward spiral of quality of life. You know, the library is constantly used, it's full of people. You go up there, I think they probably got forty computers up there, and there's a line waiting for more people to use them. When you cut that out, what does it mess up your quality of life? Recreation services, it isn't just people playing around in parks, this is all, all the leagues, this is a lot of our economic development, because we're a tourism town. I think last year in Prescott, it was about four point eight million dollar impact on the tournaments coming into council. If we squeeze that, are we really sending ourselves down this spiral? So, you know, the state I respect, you guys got a tough job to do. The county, once again, tough job to do. We can't look any further down, you know? We have to look at our citizens, and it's just gonna be some real challenging budget at times coming up. And part of that is, is the Public Safety Retirement Fund, or, and you want those guys to have that. So, I mean, it needs to get fixed. And I think there's a feeling, and you guys see this too with, I think it was the head of the firemen's board or whatever that was saying, you need to fix this problem as well, which you haven't really heard in the past.
Right. They have made a proposal, firefighters, and they're, they're in that process, and I'm not sure what the counter proposals are gonna be about the retirement system. But they made significant proposals, and that's a good first step. But you address it that way, similarly?
It is, it's, it's a, the problem is, is when you say first step, they have, they have come to us with, with a very good proposal that will save the state and municipalities a lot of money.
Seven million dollars a year.
Yes, a, a lot. And it's, it's a very good proposal. However, they have told me, under no circum, under no circumstances. Are they gonna change it? That it's, this is it, all or nothing sort of thing. That makes me a little nervous when they say that, because when you dig your heels in that much, then it's very difficult to try and come with any compromise. It's a great proposition that they brought to us, and I think we really need to seriously look at it, consider it. And part of the problem is, from a political standpoint, is we need to get people to start looking at the bigger picture, to say, how are we gonna fix this? Let's, sometimes, particularly down in the Phoenix area, they get sidetracked down there because they wanna talk union more than they wanna talk firemen. They wanna talk this battle versus that battle. You saw last year when the city of Phoenix had their pension proposal out there, it became an all-in-all war between Councilman DeCecio and the firefighters. So we need to, we need to put this aside and say, what is good for the taxpayers, what is good for the firemen?
What can the taxpayers afford to pay for? I mean, the reality is still the reality. Quality of life is defined by the dollar. Let, let's face it. Same thing with the level of service. I mean, state-of-the-art in Ethiopia may not be the same thing as state-of-the-art in Seattle, all right? Different people request different things or demand certain things. The fact of the matter is, in Prescott, Arizona, we can only afford to pay for so much. And unless the taxpayers are willing to cough up the money, what level of service do you really want? I mean, do you really need too many, too many response time, when by code, we've demanded that you build construction that can't burn? All right? By code, we've demanded certain different things, backflow valves, blah, 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 blah. What does state-of-the-art really mean today in two thousand and fifteen as compared to ten years ago, when you had a different set of circumstances to deal with? And who's prepared to pay for what? All right? Now, the voters in the area, Pine County, and I'm in the county too, even though I live in the city, just chose not to house prisoners. And what do you wanna do to those people? I'm not allowed to kill them, I'm not allowed to shoot them, all right? So what do you wanna do? You wanna put them back on the street? Where do you want me to put these people? Do you really want a bunch of dope peddlers and perverts wandering all over the streets of Prescott and Chino Valley and every place else? What do you want me to do with these people? Or what do you want my cops to do? You want them to turn their back every time they come up across somebody that they have probably caused to... probably caused a bust? What do you want to do? At some point, taxpayers have got to realize, if you want state-of-the-art or what they would consider state-of-the-art, what they've been led to believe was state-of-the-art, whether it's medical care, whether it's education, whether it's public safety, somebody's going to pay for it. It's typically the taxpayer, all right? And it doesn't come for nothing. A cop or a fireman's not going to go out there and work for ten dollars an hour. It's not going to happen.
Jim, Mr. Lamerson, Councilman Lamerson, let me just kind of narrow the discussion to the transportation issue and the HERFs sweep of the funds. Of the freshman legislators, we're all against that, and we want it, we want it to stop. And we have a good feeling it probably is going to stop because there's so much direction towards taking funds that are directed for a solution and then putting them into something else. So they, the leadership hears this loud and clear about that. But, and I have said this, and I've said it in the committee, there are certain functions of government that need to be funded, and they have to be funded by taxes and revenue and essential things like public safety and roads, public health. Those are essential, and the citizens, I believe, do understand that. But what, what's happened is that if we're going to beat the solution at the state level, the way I see it is, is that the counties, especially the counties, would come in with a unified proposal of what they're willing to do. Because as I said earlier, I'm not going to walk the plank by myself. And what I mean by that is, you know, vote for tax increases that may get swept up into another agency. In the meantime, all I, everybody's complaining up to the legislature to take care of that issue. But if I could see, and I hope I do see, a unified proposal from counties about what they're willing to do, and they're talking about that now. They're talking about raising revenue on their own and biting the bullet and doing the unpopular thing. And if we can all do the unpopular thing together and ensure that the revenue that we raise for the, for the roads and infrastructure, transportation stays in that area, then I would be willing to seriously look at that issue. Because, you know, let's take the gas tax. It's eighteen cents a gallon, and it hasn't been changed since nineteen ninety. And due to inflation, they're not indexed for inflation. If it had been, our, our portion for the state of Arizona would be thirty-three cents a gallon now. I'm not recommending that. Nobody is going to do that on their own. But if we can all come together and show that we're all suffering together and we're willing to tackle these issues together, then I think you'll see some movement. Because everybody down there knows you have to have the funds to do the essential thing. And right now, we don't.
Well, roads are one of our essentials. That's one of the six basic services that we're obligated as, as a legislative body for the community to take care of. One of the mechanisms we had to help take care of the roads was HERF funds, which was, I guess, generated through the gas we sell here. It was supposed to come back to fix the road here, and those, those things were swept. So now, all of a sudden, what you have is, we're trying to make up that difference, all right? And if the revenues, because of the economy, whatever the case would be, is not here, then we right here on one of the basic services will suffer because of somebody trying to balance a budget down in Maricopa County. Our interest in helping fix Prescott, Arizona is going to be different than Maricopa County or Pima County or Coates County. We all have different aspects to what we're trying to accomplish for the constituents we were elected to serve. I wasn't elected to go down there and play patty cakes with Maricopa County. I was elected to try and help the citizens of Prescott, Arizona. That's where my responsibilities start, that's where I serve, and that's where they stop. That's who I'm supposed to be serving. I'm not supposed to be serving the rest of the state. That's not my job. My job is to be concerned with Prescott, Arizona. And that's what I'm concerned with right now. And the fact of the matter is, I'm concerned about shared revenue, and I'm concerned about HERF funds, I'm concerned about the things that we collaborate with the state. And I realize you guys have a very unenviable position. You go down there to try and serve eighty, a hundred, two hundred, whatever it is, thousand people down there in a bucket full of about ten million. And I understand that, and I know where the votes are, and I know, I mean, the pragmatic parts of it. But you need to hear from people like me and my counterparts on the council loud and clear that we have some huge concerns. One of the huge concerns we have is, for example, the overlap of cost that it's costing us because of ineffective legislation, whether it be from a federal level, a county health department level, or a state level with regards to drug and alcohol rehabilitation proliferation in small communities, and the cost that this is impaling communities like the city of Prescott with. And I thought last year, and I could be wrong, I've been wrong before in my life, I thought last year of thirteen, there was a state law that was passed that involved these places that included such minuscule things as even monitoring, counseling, blah, 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 as being health services, and that they had to be registered. Now we're finding out that's not true. Guess what? We got to come up with something new. And it's law after law after law, but no enforcement of anything. I don't know that they're coming up here inspecting these places, even if they are registered. Every thirty days or whatever the law prescribed, who's doing what? And at what level do the people that I serve have to depend on the people that you collaborate with or work, that we're all working on the same team, that we're all going in the same direction for public health and safety? Yes, that's part of my concern. So I'm sharing it with you. You guys came up, thank you very much. Appreciate you being down there serving us, thank you very much. But you came up to try and hear some of these rants and tirants, so you can hear them.
Be afraid of what we wish for.
No, I think the indexing, I think, is a bad way to go with the gas tax because it makes it almost impossible to plan on how much money we're going to have to do it. I mean, that sounds like a good idea when the gas is at four dollars a gallon, but, you know, where would we be now with it at one ninety-five or whatever we do, you know, tagging on that percentage to it? I think one thing that we got to really look at is the licensing. You know, right now, the electric cars are getting a free ride, the natural gas cars are getting a free ride.
And it will be looked at because that's what's being discussed in transportation. They're looking at every option, every option.
Those high-mileage vehicles as well. You know, and they're all good things, and we don't want to discourage them, but do those people driving those vehicles also want good roads to be on? Because I think the gas tax model does not really work anymore because of these factors, because of the electricity, because of the high mileage. So do we still want good quality roads and have the prices to build those roads go on so high? You betcha. So there needs to be something else, and I think just as citizens, we need to decide what kind of roads we want. And by putting it on licensing, it would be even, it'd be straight across the board for everybody.
I think that's the way you're going to go down there.
On the PSBRS as well, I think, as well, I think some, maybe some different attributes might have to happen inside that organization. I heard the gentleman who handles the investments for the fund, and his, his focus was on preservation of the asset more than the growth of the fund to handle the needs of the fund. And I think he said, somebody else is down there with me, but I think I want to say that he was, he was happy with a three-percent return, you know? So while the market is way outperforming it, you know, do they have the knowledge to see that going? I mean, as an investor, I don't know. I just hang in there and hope it gets higher than lower. But you'd think they'd be a little more aggressive in order to grow that fund. So if it almost held itself, you know, then that attitude just isn't down there.
Can I just, to that point, his comment was, the fund is adverse to risk. Not saying we should go out and risk the fund monies, but adverse to risk, and if they're not charged with return, they're charged with stability.
Yeah.
And a fund that's growing astronomically in demand, that's not growing at all in its growth fund, is never going to catch up.
And then there was another gentleman that spoke at that, who was giving advice on what cities, option cities have. I mean, all the way from taxing completely for public safety and just keep increasing that, to bankruptcy, and there was a bunch of things in between. You know, and I think it's just becoming real when you see these cities in California, they're dropping, they're, they're, they're bankruptcy, this is pushing them. We don't want to do that, so.
Councilman, what also needs to be addressed is not only the investment and the return on the dollar, but there is a structural flaw in a lot of the PSBRS. And that is the amount of time that they serve versus the amount, many, amount of hours that they are allowed to, I'm sorry, years that they are allowed to collect retirement. Many of the people in PSBRS worked twenty, twenty-five years. They retired at somewhere between forty and forty-five, and they're living to be seventy-five and eighty. So consequently, especially with the baby, baby boomer ages, you have people that are collecting retirement benefits not only longer than the period of time that they've worked, but in many cases, the amount of money that they are collecting now is more money than they made when they worked. So there is a structural problem with, with that as well. One of the proposals, one of the suggestions that is in the proposal from the PSBRS is to fundamentally change that, that it would have to be a minimum twenty-five years of service and a minimum age of fifty-five before you can retire. That is one of the big fixes.
And plus, their retirement contribution goes from seven and a half percent up to eleven and a half percent.
Of course, we're at seventy-five percent on our side, you just.
But the briefing that I had on that, they think that they will have a sustainable fund if their proposals are accepted.
Well, specifically Prescott, twenty-four million dollars unfunded in our liabilities on PSBRS as of about nine months ago. So at a three-percent growth rate based on our funds, even if the overall fund becomes stable, it will not catch up because of the silo effect. The state retirement system, if you have it hit somewhere or payout somewhere, it gets absorbed by every single employee. Within PSBRS, it's stuck within the fire department and the police department of each municipality. So for us, Flagstaff has the exact same shortfall, but they have almost twice as many people paying into the system. And I believe now, at least one of our funds, we have more people retired than are paying into it, and the other one was right on the bubble less than nine months ago. And I've got a feeling that that has now changed, where we have more payouts than we have payouts.
And I think we need to, I think Jim touched on this a little bit earlier. I think as we try and fix this problem and move forward, it's very important to not let the police and fire feel like it's an attack on the employees that are there because it's not them. And we have to talk about what's, what's going on and how much we have to pay with them, but it's the system that needs to be fixed.
Correct. And again, please let me remind you, any substantive changes have to go to the voters. So if we can come up with a plan that cities and towns, the police, the fire, the general public, we're going to need your help as well as everybody else. We all need to get out there and educate everybody with what that plan is and what it will actually do. Because I'd hate to put all this work into it only to see it fail at the ballot, and then we're back to square one again.
Phoenix, they have their own plan, so they would not be a player in this, and that's what your major population.
Some, some, Phoenix has their own plan, some.
My biggest fear for PSBRS is that it's going to turn into what I see social security as, which is something that when I'm sixty-five, isn't going to be there. And I think we owe it to the employees that are starting in our cities and towns to make sure we do everything we can. And ultimately, Karen, you said it's going to take the vote of the public, and I think hopefully we can get there. And I appreciate the work that you all are putting into it. It's not going to happen overnight. There's probably going to be twenty years of changes to get it structurally where it needs to be.
And going back to another subject we were on earlier, just thank you for being part of our continuing to work on the group home issue in Prescott. We're working with a lot of the people in the, in the industry as well, and I think the people that, you know, we can't describe what is the right way and what is the wrong way of doing it, but you can see some of the results of what happens and different styles of doing it. But, you know, when, when one out of every forty residents is here for rehab, that's, that's quite a big number. So we got a three-pronged approach to looking at this, and you guys are one department, it's the legislation end, to try and make sure that people that do get here get quality licensed healthcare. We're going to be continuing to enforce our own ordinances and moving those forward a little bit. And just the enforcement end, you know, we talked about the police and fire, and here, you know, we're thinking maybe we need a little more police to focus on this problem that's in Prescott. So thank you for helping us out and continue, we, we ask you guys to look at it, which you two, I mean, single us, do. And I think they're willing to work on this, they see what the problems are too, and it's supervision, you know, exit policy, and standards for care. And if those were followed, or simply put, the golden rule was followed, we wouldn't have a lot of the problems we have today.
Thank you for being up here to help us, Mike, in concert with my fellow councilmen. Remember, not only are you here to help us, we're here to help you. I mean, it works both ways. And anything we can do to try and help you down there, you can count on the city of Prescott to try and help. That's who we are.
I can get funding really quickly before we go. There is a bill that's going to be in Ways and Means on Monday, and it's on the sheet of paper, and I just want to point out that the residential rental tax, if that were to be eliminated, that would be killer for Prescott. If you look just underneath that, that's one-point-one-two million dollars. And so while, you know, we understand that we are a part of the state's budget and trying to solve that, eliminating one of, you know, only very few options that we have locally to help ourselves is not a way that will allow us to continue on, Jeanne.
What's driving that, Karen?
Just trying to balance the budget, part of the governors.
Well, this is just the, the House bill, twenty-two fifty-four, I think.
I'm sorry, you're not talking about the rebates, you're talking about something else.
No, I'm talking about the residential rental tax.
Yeah, they won't eliminate it.
Separate.
To be quite honest, I am not the mayor with this. It doesn't go through my committees, so I will have to do some research for you on this one.
Yeah, I would suspect that it will probably get out of Ways and Means Committee, and so it would be helpful that you would be with us if it was the one.
What about the, making the multifamily trash collection open game?
I'm sorry, your question is.
We, now, the city of Prescott, our solid waste fix is residential, but there's a bill to eliminate the multifamily from the monopoly, and that would be driving that waste management.
Again, Mayor, I'm sorry, I have no idea. We have over eight hundred bills that have all been dropped over the last two and a half weeks. Noel just dropped his a couple of days ago, so a lot of people don't even know about that bill. We're working hard on that one. So as soon as they come on our radar, again, this is a good way to come on our radar, and then we start looking into it and find out what's, what's going on with that one.
Here's two that affects small community like ours, and there has to be a reason to that.
I, I don't know anything about it there, but if Allison, if you have any concerns about any bills you know about, you just info us, and we start looking at them. They're not in our committees, and, but if they're a concern to the city, they're a concern to us, so we'll look at it and find out what, what others.
What do you say is they'll be hunting you up to get you to sign on?
No, you don't have to have anybody to sign on. You just, most of my bills are dropped without any signatures on it because, quite honestly, there's no time to get signatures on it.
Well, you got some help up here.
On my, the, well, in the sense that I pretty much like that bill because it is top priority for me, and I wanted to talk to everybody personally, and I didn't have any lobbyist or anything like that helping me take that bill around to get signatures, every signature on that bill I personally. I got, I got help from Karen and certain other people to convince the Democrats to sign my bill, that it was a good bill, and that was very helpful.
I also like to just mention, yes, help. There are only three weeks, this is how fast this session is going. There are only three weeks left, this week, next week, and the following week for House bills to be heard. So please keep that in back of your mind. If you want to come down to committee meetings to testify on this bill or whatever, it's going to happen in the House in the next three weeks. That's how fast.
You think they'll be, they'll want six, five days for me to?
I don't think it's going to be six to five, there are way too many bills. They still, they haven't even finished assigning all the bills. I must have six or seven bills that still haven't even been assigned to committee, and I know there's other people that are saying the same thing, so. Most of my bills did not get assigned until last Wednesday and Thursday. So now it's crunch time. So anyway, keep your calendars open for the next three weeks. That's what I'm saying.
Legislation to. Legislation to allow charter communities as they are, to be able to go to the public for a...
We lose the call.
For a specific guy.
Take your time there.
Would you like to cry on somebody?
Even if we saw an opportunity to go to the public for a, a public safety bill specified for that use, we can't do it. We won't let us. What are our chances of getting permission?
Quite honestly, Mayor, I don't know. It's an issue I have not researched, haven't discussed with anybody, so I couldn't give you an answer without that.
Yeah, isn't that correct?
Right, the primary property tax is preserved at where it is. I think there would probably be some constitutional issues with that, so it would be quite a hurdle, but with the way the state and cities and towns are going, who knows where we'll be in five years.
And again, that's part of the fundamental problem is, is nobody wants to see their taxes raised, of course not, especially in the down economy, but as Representative Campbell noted, the sad thing is, is that without indexing of anything, consequently, the cost of goods, even if you don't grow government or anything else, just the natural cost of goods goes up. There is a bill that's coming before my insurance committee next week that will, if it gets out of committee and off the floor, and the governor signs it, it will be increasing the minimum insurance required on automobiles. The limits that are set now, the minimum insurance limits, they were set back in nineteen seventy-two. That's how long it's been since those minimum rates. So in my committee, I polled all of my members to see, you know, this is something that we want to put on the agenda, and they're quite split on them. Half of them are saying, you know, yeah, you would think after nineteen seventy-two, we should do something.
I don't want to speak to that for just a minute.
And the other half are saying, no, they don't want to see an increase, so please...
Well, fact of the matter is, as you know, I got nailed out in high of eighty-nine back in oh-three, and somebody that was a repeat pervert, you know, and busted five, six times for DUI, allowed by the state of Arizona, drive on the highways, put everybody else through the process of getting damaged, allowed by the state to have minimum insurance, both bodily harm and car and what have you. The cost of repairs on the vehicle were not covered by his minimum. The cost of the ambulance ride, medical treatment, were gone within first twenty minutes on a hospital. I don't know what it is with the state of Arizona with regards, and I understand the lobbyists' argument, if they don't have any insurance at all, they're still going to drive. So here again, it becomes a nature of, what do you do with the people that choose to put other people in harm's way, knowing full well, when they drink and drive or shoot up or whatever the case would be, and they get out on the road and they put other people in harm's way? What are we prepared as a state to do with those people after the third offense? What are you prepared to do with them? I mean, does the state really choose to allow those people to continue to cause the damage and mayhem in other people's lives that they charge, that they cause?
Well, if you want to talk specifically about DUI, I can tell you that Arizona is one of the top states in the nation, in the nation on DUI drivers.
It very well could be, but it doesn't keep them from doing it. And it doesn't keep the repeat offenders from doing it, and it doesn't generate the revenue necessary to pay for the damage they do by having minimum insurance. That doesn't do it. Okay? So we got a whole bunch of something that doesn't do a whole hell of a lot. So why don't we just shoot a few of them, and maybe they wouldn't be on the street again? I guess, that's my point. You know, how many times are you going to allow them to do this?
Greg, you been quiet?
No, I just, I think you got your witness for your bill hearing right there. Just one thing, I think that, you know, to me, it's not about, well, we end up in a dilemma of having to talk about tax increases, but what's been happening is really the opposite of that. If House Bill 2254 is passed, it won't result in a tax increase, it'll take away revenue. It's the reduction of tax. And of course, the elephant in the room is internet sales. And that's it. If internet sales were taxed, just like other retail sales that have to be, that are taxed by law, then we would be having a very different discussion here. And, you know, that's when you, when you look at the chart and, you know, the, you know, what the, what the tax reduction has been, sure, some of that's a recession, but if you look what Amazon Prime has been doing, and while doing it, because you get the stuff there in two days that you can't even buy locally. But, but it's, it's, you know, that, that income or that money that you use to buy stuff, whether it's stuff you have to have or stuff that you never thought you'd had, you know, you had to have before, and now it's just discretionary, either way, it's being bought, and the city is still providing the same public safety services and still trying to fix the roads and clean up downtown, but all that potential revenue has left the room, and nobody's collecting it. And to me, that's, that's the number one issue with respect to taxation, is to make that subject to tax, that level playing field, just like everything else. Until that's dealt with, all the other stuff is just noise. I mean, that's what I'm...
Anything, anybody talking about that?
You know, there was quite a bit of talk about it two years ago, and the frustrating thing about it is, most of the conversation ended up as that it needs to be on the federal level, not that we'll push and bug it down the hall, but the reality is, we know as municipalities, we have to be competitive with our sister cities. If our sales tax is too high, businesses will locate in Prescott Valley or Chino Valley or Austin County. Well, same thing holds true on the state, well, obviously. If Arizona were to jump out there and say, okay, we're going to tax internet sales, assuming the public would be okay with that, what happens is, is a lot of these businesses say, well, we can't be competitive with our competitors who are located in states that don't charge it, so they pack up their toys and go home, go somewhere else. So it certainly is something that we all need to talk about, but it needs to be talked about on a federal level, which means we should be talking to Congressman Gosar, Kirkpatrick, Zaman, McCain.
Or Representative Campbell's Constitutional Convention.
Or the Constitutional Convention.
Because, you know, because it goes nowhere in Washington, and meanwhile, this is what you're seeing in this running here, because that money has left the room. As the state, it seemed like a cash cow for the state.
Absolutely, but it's got to be something that's in line with everybody else, or we lose the jobs that we have here if we try and force something before the other states do it, and...
Some states are the...
There are, I believe, a couple, but certainly not the majority of them. There's ways in states out there that don't.
And that comment's not a crit, not a criticism, it's taken Arizona, it's simply the reality that there's a big chunk of money that's evaporated, it's just gone.
They're right. Presently, there's no way to enforce another state to collect the tax, and that's, that's really the issue, that's why it almost has to be solved at the federal level, because it has.
Sure.
And, and those businesses that are in those states, they don't want to collect that tax, and the state doesn't make them collect the tax. Say, Colorado, where somebody's ordering something on the internet from another state, that's the issue.
Did you bring us any money?
I think I have a buck ninety-eight, my purse, I'll be crying.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go down to Murphy's later on and drop a few dollars there.
It's your sales tax. You've got to beat the sales tax.
It's frustrating, Mayor, but we are starting to climb out of this hole slowly but surely, if we would just kept, quit getting slapped down by the courts every time we turn around, but we are starting to see it pick up a little bit. We are, I think we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. It might be down the road a little bit, but I think we're getting there. You guys look at your own numbers, building construction is starting to pick up again. You're seeing that all over the state, so we have our hopes, we have our prayers, and I think we'll get there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Charlie, go. Quit.
You've got to say the magic word.
During the meeting.
You look like he's in a meeting over there.
Okay, well, Cindy.
Just quick, your left foot out a little.
I thought that would do. I mean, for like, they want to...
Well, the larger part is good. That's a burden. Well, that's fine. Drop a bowling ball.
I thought it was going to be longer, aren't you lucky for...
I was like, I saw people like...
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, settling into the position?
Yeah, I want to come take a picture of you.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Have a Facebook tag. Hello, Mary Scott.
Yeah, sure.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, things are good, actually.
Yeah, thank you, the better.
I think so, I mean, you know, I think it was, you know, just a little bit all, because of, you know, but at first, but now he's happier now. He's happier now doing, yeah, doing what he likes doing, and not have to deal with all the, you know, executive stuff. Mary's great, I think she's going to be great, and, you know, and she's great to have around. She's actually got a good attitude. She brings a different type of experience to it, you know, so, and we're talking about a lot of interesting things.
You sound like a politician.
I know, well, I mean, well, some of it's like in the works, and I don't want to like, I don't want to support, but that, yeah, I mean, you know, we're, this new partnership with the Yacht College is good.
Is it going to happen? What do you mean, oh, you mean looking at like having a curriculum centered around that?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I mean, it seems like it's a positive, I don't know, I mean, I'm not on that, you know, I'm not really in that loop, it's been talked about, you know, so...
Yeah, that would be good.
But, yeah. Sorry, I'm not trying to be overly big, I just don't, you know, have a lot of details I can, I can share, yeah, but we're, basically what we're doing is, and I think we've kind of been tasked, I may be incorrect by the city, to actually loosen it, it might be easier, um, there we go, to make a show, basically, so that's what, kind of in the concept stages of that, and, so, hopefully we're up.